We all going to continue to be funny now, maybe like fifth or tenth class citizen in this country, or anywhere else that we go, and that is the truth. We have to support someone, we have to support this man with everything that we can. Like you said earlier, this, especially this Cop Carney, I've been living in Cop Carney for twenty years. This is the, suddenly like two, three years ago, there are many Nigerians are here. It used to be like a full of Nigerian in this environment, so, well, we are going to go straight to my question, okay? I'd like to call you Mr. President, because I believe you're going to be my president.
Yes, sir. Bye.
I have not heard what party that you're going to be running under, but please, I'm going to, I'm going to beg you, don't run under any one of those lumpy, trumpy bastard asshole parties that are formed there. Don't run it under any one of them. They will do everything possible to bring you under them. They will come up with some young, beautiful minds, smart minds, and, and, and I'm sorry, I'm not trying to be funny here, sharp guys, just to make sure they can use them to face you. Don't be scared, the Lord is with you for the time. So, now, so don't worry about that, you just keep doing what you're doing, okay? So, but we do want to know what party, I want to know, what is your plan with this election that is coming? These people, they are devils, they, they believe that country belongs to them, they own what the civil services. Those people that will conduct the election, they own them, okay? You do not have to tell us the strategy that you're going to use to defeat these people here, but I want you to assure us that we will not be disappointed, that you know what you're doing enough to make sure that you are smart, these assholes, okay? So, we want to know that. I also want to know what is your economic plan, and the reason why I ask that is this, we have lived in this country for, you know, for many, so we know that when the Republican comes, he say, "I'm conservative", and when Democrat comes, he says his own, right? So, when they promise us, uh, we don't even need to promise us most things, because before they start talking about, "This is what we're going to do", they let us know how they're going to do it. Like our children are going to the public schools, and the public school, like at the elementary level, is pretty much free. We already know we are the one that is paying for this money by our, uh, poverty taxes and other taxes that they take on us. I just need you to just, if you can, just let me and my people know, "Hey, look, this is my style, I'm going to be a communist, I'm going to be a socialist, just one or two line, how you're going to break me down for us", because these same useless people that have been ruling us in that country, the, the only thing that they have is one thing that they've been telling us, "I will give you free education", are you mad? Are you going to give me free education? "I will give you free health", are you serious? How are you going to give me free health? You know, because here, all of us that are living in America today, if you want to buy a car, you walk to a dealership, or you want to buy a house, the first thing they're going to ask you is your proof of income. The next thing is, "Are you creditworthy"? When they put all these parameters into consideration, the next thing is, "Okay, you are qualified", where you are qualified with all these other conditions, you need to put some money down. There's, I mean, the, the static parables, these European economists, they prove it in a principle, right? It's a thing's been import, if you plan to do A, you must be ready to do B. You don't just come out and plan, and Nigerians, unfortunately, they are so blindfolded that they couldn't see this. They have used anger and poverty to oppress the Nigerians so much that they don't even know what is right from what is wrong. So, we want you to assure us, or to just give us like a brief explanation of how do you plan to, uh, conduct your administrative when you get there. We want to know, you're going to be a communist, or you're going to be a socialist. I have like thousands of questions, but I don't want to be greedy, because I know there are other people who are greedy, okay? So, thank you for the opportunity to give them, and like I said, God will always be with you. Thank you. Thank you very much, my brother. His brother is my whole brother, by the way. We're going to get you everybody, please. Yeah, come on, introduce yourself, and please go straight to the question, so we can reach every other person.
All right, all protocols, sir, I just want to go straight to the question. Thank you, NS, for inviting me, um, I never even met you, yes, my brother, NS, I told you about what she did. Ah, sorry, my name is James, I'm the Kachi Godfriend, so we work together in IT, with the software. So, my question is this, um, how are you going to deal with INEC and Supreme Court? Because in Nigeria, I don't think if they actually be electionable, they just, you know, pay for it, and then somebody just, you know, get in there. Then number two, we see what the Chinese and Indians are doing in this country. I was working in a, in a hospital where each, every department was taken by Indians, they moved the department to their country, and they're running from there. So, the Americans that work there had to be forced to retire. So, they work together, bring all these ideas together, and then they go back to the country to, you know, to develop it. Here we have ITs, we have people in cybersecurity, we have people in software, I mean, software and cybersecurity. So, we have people that have all these, um, ideas to change Nigeria. So, how are you going to be able to bring all these ideas together? Anything like, I mean, anything specific you can do, so that we are ready to come back to Nigeria. But sometimes, we are afraid, well, what, you know, what if we come down there, we are kidnapped, or nobody, you know, nobody cares about you? For example, my dad had, you know, um, an accident, and they couldn't give me any particular thing that tells me what is wrong with him. So, there's no structure in the hospital system whereby if somebody went to hospital, "Oh, you're having malaria", what is the proof? That's not proof. But we can put all these things together, we know how to write workflows for the hospitals, we can do all these things, you know, because it's our country, because we love Nigeria. So, how are you going to be able to, um, say, you know, what, create a platform whereby those in that spot, I can be able to come back and do something for the country they love? Thank you. No, it's okay.
Thank you, my brother. Let me get the ladies, sit down, we'll get you everybody, please. After that, you will answer our strategic, uh, set.
Take it back! I'm so true to me, sir, you don't know, I'm a fan of yours. But my question is that, um...
What's your name?
My name is Dorita. I'm so excited, I'm sorry. You know, I've never followed a politi-, I've never followed somebody running for politics, but immediately I catch this man on YouTube, I say, "Now, this is my president!", so I'm like, "Come on!". Immediately I saw him on YouTube, I said, "This is my president", and I'm going to go for me, I donated right away, nobody had to tell me anything. So, I'm so true to me, sir, and I know you're going to be the president, don't do that about it. I saw Buhari stepping down for you. So, I'm really convinced that he's going to be the president in 2019, then I can finally come to Nigeria, because I'm always scared to go to Nigeria, because of all the, all the stories that I've been hearing about Nigeria. But my question is that, what are you going to do about HABR medicine? Because not everyone likes to use conventional medicine. And I know there's so many HABR medicine in Nigeria right now, which are not being regulated. So, what's your admission going to do about it, so that people can have alternatives? Instead of using conventional, they can also have HABR medicine, because I believe that not every disease needs drugs. Because I have a friend of mine who was on high blood pressure medication, and she has a stroke. So, you know, I'm in health, I'm in health field also, I used to, I'm in dance, actually, so I'm now in nutrition, and I value modern nature, I'm into herbs, nutrition, running, meditation, all those stuffs. So, I want people to know if we can promote more HABR medicine in Nigeria, so that they can be regulated. Thank you.
The questions, we start from what party, I can't say it enough, give me two weeks to announce a party platform upon which, uh, we're going to run, and two weeks time, you know, our party. What I need from you is an assurance that you trust our judgment, that whichever party we choose, you will follow us there to take Nigeria back with that party. We already have a political platform on "I Take It Back", there's no platform bigger than that today in Nigeria. NS was telling me that his little daughter says "Take it back", ah, there's a woman in Nigeria who sees soup money from her husband, and the husband came and said, "Where's my money?", she said, "I've taken it back". So, everybody is taking it back whatever they can. And when somebody insults you, Nigeria, instead of party, you say, "Take your insults back". So, our party will be announced in two weeks' time, we're working on it. What is your plan for the upcoming elections, so that they will not rig it? I have, uh, well, I would say, we have a reputation for stopping rigging of elections. The only reason why Buhari won 2015 was because we were able to have, to make that 2015 election rigging proof. The reason is simple, we were getting election results individually from electoral officers, from monitors during the daytime. PDP has ruled Nigeria for sixteen years, do you know the magic for winning election, the night time? Any election that PDP can have nights over, you win the election. So, what we did was to take the nights out of the election. The reason why you see Orubbebe sat down in INEC office and shouting, was because of Sahar Reporters. We were able to announce ten states before night four that day, and because they couldn't read that ten states, it became difficult to rig the rest of the election. That was how Buhari won. Of course, you know, people always accuse me of bringing Buhari to power, you hear that a lot. And if you can accuse me of bringing Buhari to power, you're able to trust me to send him out of power, simple. What is the economic plan? I don't like to describe economic systems from the point of ideologies, because I use China as an example, when it was convenient for the Chinese people, they practiced communism. When the communism wasn't working, they practiced capitalism. When capitalism is not working for them too much, they mix it together, they are not knowing what to call Chinese. If you say Chinese man now, you know you are in front of a hardworking person. If you say the Chinese economy, you know you are talking about an economy that has been able to live to serve out of poverty and provide jobs for this, for its people. China today has some of the fastest trains in the world. Is it communism? No. Was it capitalism? I've said, no. Even America, that where, where we all live, America is not practicing capitalism. America is a socialist society, because if America refuses to pay unemployment, pay the elder, pay social security, America, we have a revolution on its hands, in a matter of hours. So, when they are saying America is a capitalist society, sometimes I laugh, because people who are saying that, people who don't know what they are saying. That is why the World Bank does not prescribe, prescribe economic policies for America. They live in America, but their economic policies are for people who are not based in America, because America cannot afford to practice capitalism, America will collapse. If America says that the only way you can make money is if you can, if, uh, the only way you can live is if you can make money, they will be rioting every corner of America, both by whites and blacks and colored people. So, what we need to do in, in Nigeria is to practice a just, fair, and equitable economic system, and then we can call it Nigerianism. So, we can wait for that. See, don't let us deceive ourselves, I am a student of history, I've done all this whole aluta of Communist Manifesto, we read all of it, Karl Marx, but the question I ask myself is, if I go to Russia today, will Russians accept me? America that is capitalist is accepting of me than the Russia that is supposedly a Karl Marx country. So, we just have to understand these things very well, that let us practice what works for us, and let the people who are doing history, who are doing ideology, name it after when we have succeeded. It's the same thing I say when they were worried about my haircut. I said, "When I win Nigeria's election, I do so well, somebody will sit in the barber's chair and say, 'Give me showtime', that's hairstyle which Shworeh will wear." Because why, when Nigeria, when Obama was in power, when you go to Nigeria, you don't know how to cut your hair, you just say, "Give me Obama", so why can't you ask somebody to give you Shworeh? See, these are flops, to be honest with you, but, look, I'm more interested in how to put food on the table of Nigerians, how to provide jobs for our teamy young people through consistent programs that will provide infrastructure, electricity. Imagine, if we get electricity alone, right, in Nigeria, we will provide jobs for nothing less than twenty million people right there. Nigerians are that innovative. If we have electricity in Nigeria, the next best shoes will come out of Nigeria from Baba. The next best jackets will come out of Nigeria from Nigerian tailors. The next best, everything will be coming out of Nigeria. I went to the computer village during this, my last trip, and I was telling them that two things used to hap- one thing used to happen at the computer village, the Fela shrine used to be there, but because the government did not look at the future, the moment Fela died, they quickly converted the shrine, first we chose, now later they said, "Now a computer office". If they had kept the shrine, it would have been a multi-million dollar revenue generation. Two days after I said it, the French president went to Nigeria, I said, "I want to go and see Fela's shrine". The president of Nigeria, Buhari, has never been to the shrine before, and I believe if Buhari had gone to the shrine and inhaled some weed, maybe his head would correct today. Because Fela was there to teach sense to people who were having nonsense in their head. But they always hit that Fela, you know, Fela is useless, you know, he's a, he's a mad man. Look at what Fela has brought to Nigeria, you know, three people in the world. Nigeria is named after three Nigerians in the world, Chinua Achebe, Wale Shoyinka, and Fela Kuti. Those three people, they would say, if they don't remember what to call Nigeria, they say, "Fela's country", "Shoyinka's country", "Achebe's country", but look at what happened to those three people, Nigeria destroyed them. They were forced to Achebe until they get accident, you know, if you were a car. They were forced to Shoyinka until he ran away from the country, they beat Fela until he died. And who are the people running Nigeria? The people who have nothing to offer Nigeria. So, that is our story, but regarding economy, once again, we cannot have economy without having security. We can't have an economy without having electricity. I can tell you that one for free, I don't need to go to school to tell you that one. You can't have an economy without having integration, infrastructure. Nigeria has the highest level of post-harvest waste on the continent of Africa, because farmers cannot take their products to a farm, because there are no roads to do it. So, you can grow corn all you want, the day you harvest it, there's no road to take. Before you get to the farm, the thing has spoiled, and we don't have silos to keep them. You understand? So, you want to go and compete with China, who is making button with electricity, and you're making button in Nigeria? They don't need to teach you that in economics class, your cost of production will make it impossible for you to compete with China. The best Ankara used to be made out of cardona, now the best texture, the same Ankara, the best and the cheapest is made out of China. The reason is that the cost of production in China is cheaper for Ankara, because they have electricity. Posters that we want to print for our campaign, the best quote we have is from China. They told us that they can print a million posters and ship it to Nigeria in three days. There is no company in Nigeria that can print five hundred thousand posters for you in two weeks, because after they do two hundred thousand, they will take light. After they do another hundred thousand, uh, this will finish. Then, after they do another two hundred thousand, the mother of the provider will die. And, you know, family problems, that if somebody was mentioning about malaria, I joke about it, I say this, that it must be boring now at meetings. If you go to a Nigerian hospital, they will never diagnose you like they do here. Here, they'll take your blood, your veins, to, you know, they will do your vitals, and they will never touch you with anything. Nigeria, they'll just look at your eyes like that and say, "Bro, you get malaria". In three days, you come back, after they give you the anti-malaria, you come back, they say, "They're tied for it", they just upgrade automatic. After nine days, you know what they go up to? Spiritual attack. Now, a doctor is handing you over to a pastor. And that's the circle, now, so that's our healthcare in a nutshell for you. But here, if you go to hospital, nobody will ever touch you until they have checked you out. They will ask for the results of your vital signs, they will ask for blood results, and then they'll haul you back. But Nigeria, after you are diagnosed with malaria or this thing, the doctor will not ask for your boot outs. You'll be injected with all kinds of things. If one side is, they say, "Is the side paining you?", they say, "Go home, you bring the other side tomorrow". And people will tell you in Nigeria, which is funny, say, "You are sick", "Did you see the doctor?", they say, "Did he give you injection?", you say, "No", you say, "You are, you are not, you are not on that treatment yet", until the doctor is able to puncture your behind, that there's no space on your, you are in pain. But how many of you, since you got to this country, has ever received injection or your boot outs? Probably none. I never had that, I only had like a, a venous injection, a water thing, and they hope every other injection is next. And in two hours, I was fine. But in Nigeria, they had to be injecting, they were injecting the arm, boot outs, sometimes they'll be looking at your neck, you know, to see if they're, they're there. Dangerous, what we call health in the country, it's not funny, but sometimes we have to make light of some of our problems, just to get over there. How would you deal with INEC, Supreme Court, elections? INEC is something that has been problematic. In fact, today, uh, we just did a report on INEC with our Sahar Reporters, who are, who are used to work full time. And INEC to give out PVC, INEC is collecting bribes. So, we, Sahar Reporters sent out reporters to go and videotape them secretly, and the report is out, and check out what try to say. That's the problem, INEC is out there to help government rig the election, the government of it. Because part of our problem is that the INEC chairman is appointed by the president of the country, so the independence is not there. INEC chairman should not be appointed by the president of Nigeria, it should be an independent body of credible Nigerians, or even judges that should appoint INEC. I would never support National Assembly also appointing INEC, those guys are criminals, because they can never approve of any appointment without collecting bribe. And the moment somebody gives them bribe to become INEC chairman, that person is compromised. But there has to be a different way to appoint INEC chairman from the way we do, but we know how to handle INEC. Those of you who follow Sahar Reporters, they love it. We used to follow INEC so much that in 2007, I think, we were able to get the election results before the election date. That was how great INEC was in those days. But there's technology now, and we can use technology to also fish out the shenanigans. I won't tell you too much of it, but we kind of have an idea how to deal with INEC. But the most important thing is that, let's do it the way they did in New Mexico. If you cannot win an election, you can't rig it. That's the strategy to defeat INEC and the rigging machine. The moment the proponents of voters in, in favor of a candidate is sixty-something percent, nobody practically can rig that election. And if you rig it, it will be known to the world that you have just won an election, and then we can form a parallel government from wherever we might be to challenge the shenanigans. Supreme Court, may I tell you, I cannot guarantee you what will happen to Supreme Court until Shworeh becomes president. We, we have to flush out judges, there's no question about that, that's what I talk about, consequences. People always want me not to disclose what I will do to corrupt people, but I think that we have to be clear about what we before, people who are destroying Nigeria. We cannot continue to pamper them. That's the problem, we are pampering them with language. There's no country in the world that pampers criminals, you know? Even in America, when Trump was campaigning, there were people shouting, they had to lock up Hillary, lock her up, even though it looks like it's Trump that ended up in a lockdown, you know, but that's America's problem. But at least that was a desire of even a democratic country and their voters. They were asking for people to be locked down, because they know the importance of locking criminals away from society. Look, what is it that we used to, we used to fight crime in African society, the mobilization of shame? I don't know if there's any one of you that comes from societies where if someone is a thief, they would tie shells of snail around their neck when they were still, and the town crier would be singing behind the person and says, "Thief", what would people call it, "Gimemerah", what's, what's robo-, who is robo here? Robo? Nobody from robo land. They will come to another meeting. So, these are thieves. We always mobilize shame against thieves in African societies, and there's no reason why we should say that, "Oh, if we win election, we will give awards to the thieves that amongst us", I'm sorry, I cannot say that, because people ask me to be honest. I want to be honest that thieves cannot have a place in our country, and we cannot continue to tolerate thieves. That's how most of you ended up as second slaves in this America, is because they stole your future and bought mansions here around you with it. Some of the mansions that Nigerian position have bought in this Atlanta, they don't open it more than twice a year, they only come around. But the houses are there. There was a time in, uh, in, in Texas, we found Odios of Carlos's mother's house. You know America now, you buy house from there, they will be looking for a way to take you back. She did not throw away the garbage, she left the garbage when she was leaving, she thought she was in Nigeria. They kept giving tickets, every day they would come and give ticket, instead of taking the garbage away, they put ticket every day, at the point the ticket was getting to a point where the house was due for repossession by the city. But the woman did not work for it, that's why she didn't care about it. We have found several properties like that in this, in this US, particularly in Atlanta, uh, and, uh, Maryland, Potomac area. In this Atlanta, there's a guy called, uh, he's Igoyota, Senator Iyogota or something, he used to be Burri's, uh, right-hand man, he bought a house in this place, we exposed it, he sold it and ran away. Please, I'm also going to need your help when I become president, all the mansions that are bought by stolen people, stolen money here, you have to let us have their address, we recover every damn money. I'm telling you, we'll recover everything. Me, I've lived in America for nineteen years, I can't afford a house, some video, you come and buy house here, and you say we should leave it. No, it's not possible. We will write officially to the American government that this is stolen money, this is not explained with, when you sell it, you have to repatriate it to Nigeria, we use them to build schools and hospitals. We have Nigerians with expertise, as we intend to, we have to incentivize people. We have understudied India, how did India bring back all their doctors? Such that Nigeria is spending two billion dollars in India every year, American tourism. How did India bring back all their tech people? They built cities for them, they provide special security for them, they made them feel at home. They also reformed their airports. If I get to Nigeria today, one of the things I will do is to fix the airports, at the minimum, provide toilet paper in the, in the bathrooms, and provide free wifi. You know, so these are some of the small, small things that make people want to come home. But if you walk into Nigeria today, you arrive, and you're like, "How is there somebody cannot buy bomb", because it's always as if you are in a witchcraft zone, at the Moet al-Ahmed, it's always kind of dark, a little light, a little darkness, and they say, "You just need to bite off this place", if you are departing, the same story, if you are waiting for your bag, that's the worst, it's the hottest place next to hell, the luggage, uh, and there's confusion everywhere. Everybody's just in there like, "Oh, you go market", you know, everybody's in, so, we want to, we want to restore those order into our airport. We can digitalize our airport to tell, in this country, in, in, in Atlanta here, if you are going to gate fifty-something, you will find somebody that says, "If you are walking, it will take you two minutes", we can provide those things, you know, you feel like you are in a, in a, in a country that works. But you know, you know where you are landing into Nigeria, you just know that, yes, you are going to somewhere different. And when you land like this, the more... And when you land like this, the moment you get out of the stench and the heat that will hit you upon the opening of the door of the airport, you just know that, my goodness, this place has no governance. We have to restore that governance back to our country. Eh, Loretta, you asked about herbal medicine. Australia, I grew up on herbs. I'm a big fan of herbal medicine. And I know that synthetic drugs don't help a lot of people. But that is not to say that we don't need it. So what we need is regulation of these herbs. Eh, my job as a child, when I said nineteen, when I was in my, you know, when I was ten years old, I used to serve alcohol to people visiting my dad. And the pretense is that they will come and say that, oh, they will ask, we have different one, they call it shepherd. You put it inside, they put root inside. But that is the biggest excuse to drink alcohol. Because all those old men will come to our house and say, teacher, my father is a teacher. Oh, I don't like to drink ogogoro, they call it wanta, the one with no roots. But the question is that, it's possible that some of them are good, but it's also possible that some of them are destructive. But nobody has done any research to know which of the roots work for what. For example, I know that when you have malaria, there's a particular leaf, they call it akinthola. Yeah, and dogoyaro. They cook it together, you use it to heat yourself, you know, they wrap something around you where you come out of it. They blanket, yes, you come out of it with mats. You come out of it, you feel better, you feel lighter, you know that you have sweated out the malaria. But if it is not malaria, your malaria will not go, the thing will not go away, right? But I'm wondering, why hasn't anybody in Nigeria looked at that and said, what proportion or what content of dogoyaro do you need to solve malaria in such a way that it doesn't affect your kidney or lungs? Because that, that stuff is pretty strong. Or what proportion of alcohol goes with some of it? That, that's regulation that I think we need. I don't think, I believe that herbs do work. In fact, most medicine that we use today emanated from herbs, they emanated from tree bags. But people who are smart have been able to take it from us and they send it back to us. For so long, didn't we say weed was bad for us? But it was actually cigarette that wasn't good. But because cigarette was commercially valuable, they started running after people who were selling weed. Now, Ekiti State is the biggest producer of weed in Nigeria. Apart from Ekiti, there's a place they call Kwalé.
Dokuwa.
Uh-huh. That weed of Kwalé, if you smoke it, your head start rolling. But nobody in Nigeria, this is on a serious side, nobody in Nigeria is thinking about weed from the medicinal point of view. Very soon now, Nigeria will be importing weed to treat problems in Nigeria. They have demonized the Nigerian weed. But if we were here now, Nigerians will be researching how to be packaging Nigerian weed. It might be our next oil. But you still find eh, what is it called eh, the national drug law enforcement, they just going all over the places in weed, you know, we are burning weed. Why are you burning weed? By now, we should be creating silos of weed. Because it's going to become a big product for medicine in the future. And anywhere in Nigeria, you can grow very good weed. And that is not to say that I smoke weed, I don't smoke weed, I've never, I've never smoked weed before. But I've never thought that weed is a bad grass. Because I follow Fela very well. And you see the way Fela produces music, you must know that there's something good about weed. Am I right? Yes. But we demonize weed because we don't do research. Everybody just go to church, oh, don't smoke it, boy, if you smoke it, boy, your head will turn around, you know? That's not the problem. The problem is that anytime you have a product around you or you have a plant around you that has some special use or special attribute, research them. And that is part of what we must invest in our education, we must do research. We don't do research in Nigeria. Every research is based on what they bring from the West. And now Westerners have told us that weed is good. But we are still going around throwing away our weed. When I become president of Nigeria, and I'm saying this to every one of you, I will create a weed silo, a goat silo. I'll be keeping, no, it's true. So that if anybody, we are not smoking it. But if, if, if we can sell it to people who want to use it for medicine, Nigerian weed might as well be the best weed in the world. So instead of going around while they're burning down weed farms, we research and see if that can help medicine. By way of research, that's what I mean. Before some of you will go to church and say that Shoré need deliverance. No, I don't have a problem, I'm just thinking ahead digitally. So I hope eh, my questions, your questions are well answered. I hate to look at time, I really do hate to look at them, but it's nine twenty-one. And if you are still here at nine twenty-one, I have no reason to leave. But if you permit us, because we have been out there for a long time, just traveling, last weekend, we were in Edmonton in Canada. Yesterday, we were in Detroit. Day before, we were also in Detroit. And today, we are in Atlanta. Tomorrow, first flight, we are heading to Milwaukee. So if you permit us, we just take the last set of questions. And eh, we can take a little break and rest a bit while we are here in your midst. Thank you very much, moderator. Thank you!
Back!
Thank you!
Back!
Thank you!
Back!
Well, by the way, I've done a little, a little bit of research, weed is good for glaucoma, it's good for apollo. One more that your eyes are clear. Yeah, we're going to take three questions in the rest. I'll start with this brother here.
Can you give our sisters some?
The brother in the red car. And eh,
The back?
My sister in the back. Let's do it quick.
Alright, so, my name is Suame Falari. We met four years ago in New York at your Sahar reporters studio, actually. I met you through eh, Uvali.
Okay.
Eh, it's good to see you. It's, it's good to, to have good talk, but Nigeria needs solutions. Talk is good, but we need solutions. A lot of us live in this country that can do good in Nigeria. I've worked for some of the biggest names in television in this country, and I'm still seen as a second-class citizen. I do more work than the white people, and I'm still seen as a second-class citizen. ESPN, Fox, Bein Sports, I've worked for all of them, but I'm still not given that opportunity. I'm still pigeonholed into the Africa expert region. So how do we do solutions where we're not having, and this is one of the issues we have in Africa, the older generation still feel like the West, their ideas are better. Anything coming from abroad is better. How do we change that? That's my first question. Because it is terrible for us as a nation to allow a white person to retire in their country to come and take a job in our country. And I've seen that happen multiple times.
Every day.
Alright. How do we develop Nigeria and create a maintenance culture? We have a maintenance issue in Nigeria. It's easy to build a building, but not have anything infrastructure-wise to support and maintain that building. Judiciary, you already talked about that. But I also want you to explain a little bit deeper, who are some of the candidates that are going to run? Because in, in civilized societies, we don't just appoint people, people actually run for position of judiciary. If that's something that we need to change in Nigeria, we need to, we need to execute that. It's also another to run for president, who are some of the like-minded candidates that are running for senate? House of Rebs? Because you're not going to be there by yourself, you need like-minded people supporting you as well. If Nigerian senators are making this ridiculous money that you say, how do you get the senators in Nigeria to vote against themselves to reduce their allowances that they're making? It is a vote, right? Because it's not by you president saying they have to reduce their amount, it has to be by a vote. How do you make that happen? The majority of our electorate are illiterate, let's be realistic. Certain parts of Nigeria can easily bribe with a bag of rice for their vote. How do we actualize and make changes with this? And my last question, what do you have, what do you do to people like Muharri, who have muted our money and others? Thank you.
Thank you very much, my brother.
Thank you, Mr. President. Welcome to Atlanta again. I'm going to be quick and straight to the point. Um, my name is Fermy Martin Lugo. I'm from Atlanta. I've, I've been into trucking for eleven years right now, eh, the trucking business. Eh, the question I want to ask for you, first of all, I'd like to offer my condolence to the people who died in Lagos recently. Um, I hope that would not happen again. Um, but what I'm, what I'm more particular about is eh, how do you intend to reform? Because we know in any economy, the trucking business is the heart of any economy. Without, all the things we are wearing today is the trucker that brought it to wherever it got it from. Logistics is very, very vital in a, in a country. In fact, it's what builds a country. What do you, what do you have, what plan do you have in place to make sure that when you get in power, every aspect of trucking, to make sure that the, the, the roads, the trucks are, they are good enough, they are roadworthy, the roads are good, just like here, we have the truck stops, we have the rest areas. What happened in Lagos was, was not supposed to have happened. Because what I heard was that the truck was parked on the side of the road.
Right.
There's no reason, you get a ticket for that if you're parking, if you do here. In fact, if you are by the side of the road, what is called shoulder.
You'll be surrounded.
You'll be surrounded, and you have to have your flashers on, and there's only a limited amount of time you need to stay on the side of the road.
Right.
Before the cop comes here and gives you a ticket. There's supposed to be red, eh, red stops, truck stops, where fields are being, eh, the trucks get their fuel. So I'm going to be short on precise. What is the, what, what plan do you have when you get in power to make sure that eh, the, the trucking industry is run smoothly? And eh, everybody, all the rules that are applied here is being applied in Nigeria as well. So that we won't be able to be witnessing the same thing that happened recently in Nigeria. Then also one quick comment as well, and this is to speak to my fellow Nigerians. Eh, please, I would really want you to support Shoré. This is the Matuta king of our era.
Thank you!
I know we've been sleeping, we've been sleeping for years, but this is the time for us to wake up.
Wake up!
Fifty-six thousand five hundred thirty-seven are the Go Fam members. This guy has been running, he's been doing this thing for almost four months. No God further. For four months he's been doing, I've been following this man. Sometimes I tell my wife, I say, does this guy sleep? How does he do it? But I know his energy is from the, the power we are giving him. It's like, it's like he's giving that energy, he's feeding from that.
Right.
So please, we need to support him. We need to support him. In fact, whatever we have to do, I know we are trying, but we need to try more.
Yes.
At this point, there's no reason why we shouldn't be, it shouldn't be up to one million. I'm talking to Darsfora, you know? I don't know how the account in Nigeria has been run. But here, please, this is, if we, if we miss this boat, I don't know when next. To me personally, if we miss this boat, I don't know when.
When next are we going to make?
So please, let's embrace him. I keep praying for you, Mr. Shoré.
Thank you.
Please, God will continue to give more grace to your elbow. And also want to know that we are behind you hundred percent.
Thank you!
Thank you so much. And also, go and get your PVC. You are powerless without your PVC. So please remember that. Thank you so much.
Thank you, brother. You are in the spirit, my brother. The lady in the back. Sister in the back, please, let's not be partial. Let's.
Hello, everyone. Eh, my name is Jamila Abdussalam. I'm from the north, I'm from Zaire, actually. And eh, I've been here for fifteen years. I used to, I was a reporter in Nigeria for AID. I came to the country in two thousand and thirteen, where we launched in New England. We never went back. But anyway, my question is eh, if you become the president of Nigeria.
When? When you, when?
When?
Yes.
You become the president of Nigeria.
Yes!
Based on what I've seen, when I covered the Nigeria election in two thousand and three. Eh, corruption?
Please, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Eh, when I covered the election in two thousand and three in Nigeria, eh, I was in the field. And I saw a lot of things that happened with the balloting, people bribing people, giving money to people, you know, to vote for political candidates. Eh, I know you'd mentioned that you're going to have people on ground to kind of take a look at that to make sure we have a fair election. But knowing the politics in Nigeria is like a cult. How do you intend to eradicate that? That's one question. My second question is eh, the issue of Boko Haram going on in the north, taking over. How are you or what are your plans that you're going to take to stop it from spreading, spreading all over the, the country Nigeria? And then my third question is eh, in terms of creating your cabinet, what are the criteria you're looking for in people that would run with you from the president of Nigeria? Those are my questions, thank you.
God bless you, brothers and sisters. Eh, thank you for coming once a day. Eh, as we all know, you might have known me by now or not, I am the president of the poor. Commander in chief of the defenseless and the voiceless, put your hands together for me. At least I have the lowest act. May the Lord Almighty bless us all in Jesus' mighty name. Eh, like we were saying earlier, it is not easy to fight or run against the Kabas. We know them, I come from a dusted. And eh, one of the Kabas is eh, am I allowed to say it?
Yes, right.
Eh, one of the Kabas is Osho Mumu, one. So, and eh, he have wrecked a dusting to Gransio. You know, I stays in Cape Verde for a long time before I came to Belgium and United States. So to shorten your story, as I speak today.